Well, it's multifaceted. One aspect of it is to legislate effective policy that is going to help transform the city of Shreveport in what I call the four principles of empowerment that I'm pushing and that's just cause, equitable, culturally diverse, and also focus on the civil liberties of all citizens. The second aspect of that, you have to basically be a sales agent for the city, not only locally in terms of building diverse coalitions, but also on a regional, national, and global basis. So those particular things are definitely there. Third, sometimes you have to be a negotiator of sorts as relates to various community issues that may arise, where you can now get with a variety of different groups and basically start to enlighten them about the governmental process because it's been my experience for the past 23 years, most people have no clue as to how this thing works at the local level, state level, or national level. So those are the three areas: legislate and effective, just, equitable, culturally diverse policies, selling the city, and also educating the citizenry as it relates to the overall process. Well, that's an interesting question. First off, I've been doing grassroots advocacy empowerment work here for the past 23 years. I got back to Shreveport in 1994 as a pharmaceutical sales rep with Astro Pharmaceuticals. So I was brought back here to take over the North Louisiana and Southern Arkansas territory. Upon graduating from Xavier, my first corporate assignment with Navistar Financial Corporation was to preside over a multimillion dollar territory in Alabama, based out of Birmingham, handle 80% of the state of Alabama for Navistar. And then I was subsequently relocated to Tennessee to take over 95% of the state of Tennessee. So I've always worked since the age of 21, and I'm now 50, about to be 51, in capacities with corporate America as it relates to understanding the corporate dynamics and we had to deal with budgets and whatnot. My academic background at Xavier is marketing and economics, so that had already prepared me to go into those particular endeavors. But over the past 23 years, engaging in grassroots advocacy work here in the city of Shreveport, we've dealt with the budgets. I'm fortunate to be the last mentee of former councilman, former judge, Hiri Huckabee. So from that standpoint, I was around the entire process. So that equips me in terms of the experience aspect, and we've always pushed as it relates to the overall dynamic of making the budget more reflective and inclusive of all of the residents. So those are my background, education, experience, and expertise that would qualify me to serve in the capacity. Well, you know, interestingly enough, as it relates to the whole water and sewer situation, and this is, you know, in any city in the United States that's over 100 years old is facing the same things. You know, the type of material that was used to install water and sewer lines years ago that's now decayed, so all of these cities are facing the same issues. Now, this thing really came to light under the High Tower administration. We were always pushing for this to be resolved. Of course, they kicked the can down the road to the Glover administration, and then it finally came due. So of course, that's the big push now, and unfortunately, most of the work is being done by outside, house state firms. But as it relates to the other infrastructural issues that we have in Shreveport, especially the ones that you talked about in terms of buildings, dilapidated housing, housing stock, those particular things, now you have to now have an inclusive economic advisory committee that comes in. And most of the people that's on the city council unfortunately have never been in corporate America, and they've never been business owners. So they're already at a deficit. So you have that particular dynamic, so you gotta have somebody that works from an economic standpoint that can now create plans and projects to utilize or repurpose those particular buildings. For example, you have schools that are just sitting up that can easily be repurposed and used for different things. I've seen in a few cities where some schools are being used as housing stock. I like what happened downtown with the Lee Hardware Building and United Jewelers. Now, what happens there, you have out-of-state developers who have a more holistic vision of how to repurpose properties, and that's basically what you have. We have an old federal building downtown that I have a game plan to get in contact with a developer out of Chicago who took a facility that was highly infested with asbestos. The city gave him the building for $1. He came in, refurbished that particular building, turned it into housing. So you gotta have people who have perspectives that go outside of what we're looking at, and that also goes into our historical neighborhoods like Highland, Queensborough, taking those particular houses, redeveloping them, and getting them back into tax use. They play the most vital role. Look, we're here right now. If you look at my platform, you'll see on the economic development, one of the areas I talk about is increasing the amount of employment into the city of Shreveport. We have a regional airport that has now become an Achilles heel because Shreveport has been declared a business travel market. One of my five primary industry focuses is hospitality, tourism, the culture, economy. We have to be able to increase the amount of employment. Now, how are we gonna do that? We now have to have a legitimate tourism plan. I sat on the Tourism Board of Directors for a few years back in the early 2000s. I'm the only person in the United States that has a master plan to develop an African-American tourism project that would be housed in Shreveport, where we would secure 2% of the African-American tourism market nationwide, which is over $70 billion, which would mean that $1.4 billion would be coming into the city. So when we're looking at economic development, the city council is supposed to be that entity that helps to work with existing businesses, future businesses, to create that particular stimulus. Southwest pretty much told me years ago that the reason that they were not considering this market, our total MSA within an hour drive time in Shreveport is roughly about 500,000. They're looking at a number of about 800,000 plus in order to bring a major discount carry in. Now, the current director at the airport is doing a great job in terms of that, but that one industry alone shows where the vision has not been there on the city council. And then when you bring in the issue of race, we now have a dynamic where race continues to be a caveat of stymying growth and progress. So we have a lot of people who leave the city based on lack of opportunity, and that intellectual capital has to be returned in order for us to now progress the city. Another plan that I have in my game plan is to take some of the CDBG funds that come into community development and creating an idea village. They do that in New Orleans because the whole thing of economic development actually starts with the creation of ideas. And so we have to be an idea city, and the city council is ground zero as it relates to making that happen, and then working with the mayor, who is supposed to be the number one sales agent for the city. So they have a vital role. That's a great question. You know, I run two nonprofits, and it's unfortunate because there's a lot of corruption, not only the ones who've gotten caught, but there's a political dynamic that goes on in terms of awarding grand funds. I'm proud that both of my organizations, one, you know, we don't receive any funding whatsoever other than for myself, and we do the Tuesday Morning Breakfast, upon which we've had y'all's good president to come speak to our organization, but we've been in existence for 22 years now. But my Get Up Incorporated, as a matter of fact, we're getting ready to do our 182nd birthday celebration for C.C. Antoine. We, this year, we get like $5,000 from the parish, but they have a good control mechanism as it relates to it. But when you're an elected official, you can take the case of Michael Williams, for example, in his particular situation. You should not vote on any particular measure if you have a nonprofit. For myself, I think that's one of the best ways of being able to vet a particular deal. So if your constituents, your colleagues on the council feels that you have a legitimate project and program that can actually enhance and bring revenues to the city by way of what you're doing, then I don't see anything with it. But when you're now in a situation where you're trying to advance yourself, whether it be through grants or even contract procurement dollars, because that's another big thing, we now have an issue. I'm glad that the business that I operate as a micro enterprise is a private sector-based business. I have a company called Creo Soul Louisiana Meat pies, so I have to earn my keep as it relates to private sector business. It's not based on contract procurement opportunities. That's the other dynamic that comes in. So both of those things, whether it be the grant funding or the contract procurement funding, those controls basically need to happen as it relates to whatever legislator is not voting on those particular things, and a thorough vetting process is actually done. But behind the scenes, there's a lot of personal politics that go on as it relates to getting certain deals done that if you're not behind the scenes, you wouldn't actually know that those things actually go on, and some of the nonprofits who actually need funding can't get funding because of those political measures. So I would be in favor of making sure that if you're elected, you can't vote on anything if you are a nonprofit entity representing it. I said yesterday in the interview, as it relates to the people who are running against me for this seat, yes, the best indicator of future performance is past performance. So we definitely gotta look at past performance. We have to do an exhaustive vetting process as it relates to their educational background, their experience, their expertise, and their ability to work well with people. The other thing is, I would like to see whoever is elected to whatever or appointed or recommended for appointed for any position, they create some form of a plan. You know, not just, "Oh, I like this guy. He's my guy." Let me rub a stamp. No, 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 no. You come to the table with a plan of action. Let's evaluate the plan. Let's have about four or five different candidates, and let's screen them all that particular way. That plan of action is gonna say a lot because now they have to do some research as it relates to what the appointment is, how they are going to actually impact that particular department or agency. Those things now will really aid and abet in terms of helping the city council then make that approval of that particular entity. And again, unfortunately, a lot of people who get elected to not only the city council but Paris Commission, School Board, they really don't have the expertise to do the evaluations or even come up with a thought like, "Hey, man, maybe we need to, you know, have them create a little mini-business plan as to what they're gonna do in this particular capacity." So that's where I would be able to kind of help even make some idea suggestions to the council, but those are the things that I would recommend in terms of considering an appointee. Well, that's another great question, and that again gets down to the issue of race. Shreveport historically, this is a city that was the last city to surrender vis-à-vis the Civil War. That carryover continues to this very day. Cultural diversity is the only way that you're gonna get collaboration, whether it be the council, the Paris Commission, or the School Board, and the same thing exists on each one of those bodies. So when you're looking at the city council, we're talking about a seven-member board. If I'm elected, I become the first African-American elected in District B, which would give, first time in 182-year history of this city, majority control to African-American descendants. And what I say to anybody, I'll say to you what former President John Bart Jurno told me in 1991, when I was just 22 years old at a cultural diversity conference with Navistar in Chicago. He said, "You need to be in management because you deal with things squarely and upfront." Politics is not a, it's a sport, it's a game to most of the people involved. Most of them don't see the actual human life that exists. I see that human life. So what ends up happening, people idealistically look at this thing like, "Oh, people have to get along." That's not how this works, whether it's at the local, state, or federal level. You have to be able to form a team, whether it's Team Shreveport, Team Cato, and you say, "Hey, this is what we're fighting for: freedom, justice, equity, culture, diversity." Everybody has to be able to eat. If you look at my logo or my platform, you will see a black hand connected with a red hand, connected with a brown hand, connected with a yellow hand, connected with a white hand, then connected with green and purple. And what it says saying is, when black people of goodwill connect with Native Americans of goodwill, and they connect with Latinos of goodwill, and Asians and Middle Easterns and Caucasians of goodwill, around those principles: freedom, justice, equity, and cultural diversity. And now we protect our youth represented by the green hand and protect our elders represented by the purple hand. Now, in the middle, you can have peace because everybody has to be able to have a piece of the pie. And if you can now embrace that, like Atlanta, Georgia has done, that's the test case. Now you grow that pie, everybody can be able to eat. Now you have better collaborative measures that's going on, and I'll basically be the one that would be doing that, speaking truthfully to power. Again, race, culture. I left Shreveport in 1985, went to Xavier University. After Xavier, I was recruited, had over 25 job offers. I knew I was never coming back to Shreveport. Same reason that Venus and Serena Williams' father, Richard Williams, was never coming back here. Same reason that Paul Mooney, the person who wrote all the jokes for Richard Pryor, was never coming back here. The same reason that Johnny Cochran was never coming. The same reason that Juanita Beranco is there. It's the same thing. I was never coming back here. I get to Atlanta, do the Navistar thing, then I come back here to help take care of my daughter. I was the first white person to become an advertising consultant with Bell South Yellow Pages. Still couldn't get with Shreveport. Went back to Atlanta, cannot get with it. Loving Atlanta because they had fought these fights. And in 1974, Maynard Jackson made it very clear to the white business community that black people were going to eat, there was going to be equity in the city. End up being relocated back here in 94. Couldn't get with it. I was ready to leave. And here, a situation happens where I end up having to stay, so I said, "I'm going to make the best of this." The thing that I've seen in this city is that the same thing that has kept a major divide still continues, and that is the issue of race. If we cannot forge cultural diversity in this city and create a situation where equity exists, where we can retain our intellectual capital, because our intellectual capital, both white and black, typically leave, and now that leaves a lot of incompetent people. I'm just being honest with you. That leaves a lot of incompetent people in key positions in the private sector, key positions in the public sector, and now you recycle all of this incompetent so-called talent, and they have no worldview of substance, and that stagnates the progress of this particular city. Shreveport is a goldmine, and if we can get beyond, and the only way you can do this is talk realistically and honestly about these issues. If you can get beyond the issue of race and embrace those principles of freedom, justice, cultural diversity, and equity, and now look at Atlanta, Georgia, and it's not perfect, but is the prototype of what you can now do, and now you have over 30 major Fortune 500 corporations headquartered out of ATL and the surrounding area, 50 Fortune 1000 corporations, so that now creates the overall aspect. So when people can share and people can respect each other, now you can now start to make some things happen. Well, I've already come up with a positioning statement for Shreveport from a tourism standpoint, and my vision is maneuvering Shreveport and making it the diamond on the red, a rising global star. You know, Cedric Glover coined this thing about the next great city in the South. No city in the South that's a great city is trying to be a great city in the South. They're thinking globally, they're thinking universally. So we have to shift our focus, and my focus is a global focus in terms of that thought process while acting locally, because we can't go out of our bounds in terms of generating revenues. So that's the number one thing. That's my vision, because I believe that Shreveport can be transformed with some real serious dialogue around these core issues. Now, my core things, boom, economic development, number one, because we gotta create employment opportunities. I'm the only person that's basically touting a position that we can create well over 2,000 jobs between two initiatives. I'm definitely in favor of the Red River Development Project that Paul Pratt and Larry English and his group is forging ahead, but I've also created a project to develop the West End portion along Texas Avenue in my particular district as well. But there's another opportunity for us with remote job employment. A lot of corporations have job opportunities for people, but they're not physically based in that city. They're through the computer, they're on the phone. You can create those particular opportunities here in Shreveport. So economic development, definitely. Education is the next thing. One of my opponents said, "Well, there's nothing that we can do as city council people as far as education." Well, we're not responsible for education, but now is when you take off your legislative hat, and now you put on your lobbying hat. Now you have to work cohesively with the legislators on the city school board so that you now get them to understand the vital importance of education being the central focus of economic development, and we now really focus on STEAM education. And then the third thing, as it relates to my big push is, if you, because I have 10, I would probably put in there, out of the other seven, because all of them are important, I probably would have to say crime in terms of that overall dynamic, although I don't consider crime a problem, I consider it to be a symptom of a problem, but we have to be able to get a control of that so that we can now navigate all the other things and make people feel safe. Well, when I began doing the advocacy work on the Fair Share Program along with Councilman Hiri Huckabee, Councilman Joe Shine, now Councilman Willie Bradford, Attorney Larry English, former attorney Joe Smith, and James Panell, I started to learn. I was actually reading Martin Luther King's book, Why We Can't Wait, and in the book, he's talking about the creation of physical tension. And while this is going on, I'm actually in the mix of this, and I'm not knowing all of this, and this is kind of like how this happens. You are doing work, and all of a sudden, it's like, "Oh, you're in the history-making moment." And needless to say, I won't embarrass the person who steps to the table to offer me payoff to go quietly. Just be cool, don't say anything else. You need to stop rocking the boat. And of course, I didn't do it, and I was representing the interests of the Minority Contractors Association and other African-American firms, because I knew that here we have a city that's almost 60% African-American, and you have a plethora of black businesses, but they were getting less than 5% of the public sector contracts. But I had to do the statistical analysis, and that's the first time this has ever been done in the United States, that a grassroots organization provided statistical data to actually show what these firms are getting. And as a byproduct of that, now the various forces who didn't want that to happen started sending information to the Minority Contractors Association, the group that I'm representing, and it was like, "Hey, man, we'll pay him if he just chills." And they actually brought that to me at a meeting, and I said, "Well, that can't happen because I understand the ethics and the morality piece better than anyone." And I said at that time, "There's no way that I could take a payoff because it's not only gonna impact me on this issue, it would impact me on all future issues." And I rejected that, and subsequently, I stopped representing them at that particular point in time, and the momentum that they had to now forge ahead died. And so that is the best one that I can tell as it relates to this process that I'm in, and most people are not gonna be able to do that, especially if they have bills that they need to pay and would like a new car or a bigger house. You have to be willing to become a selfless individual, and the only way that you end up doing that is by having a spiritual and cultural foundation that elevates you towards becoming a selfless individual, and I've gone through that process. Well, as I just got through saying in terms of crime, you know, there's a big thing, everybody's talking about crime, crime, crime. Crime is not a problem, it's a symptom of a problem. And I described this last night at this church that I had to speak at. Say, just imagine you've been sick for two weeks, got a runny nose, sore throat, fever 112, you know, congestion. You're sick, two weeks. So you finally decide, "I'm gonna go to the hospital, go see the doctor." So you go in, nurse comes to see you. "What's wrong?" Boom, I'm sick, congestion, sore throat, runny nose, fever, headache. And so they take the x-rays, they look at your patient history, and say, "Well, you know, Dr. Daniels will be back in a minute, and he'll come check you out." Dr. Daniels comes in, says, "Mr. Turner, what's wrong?" "Hi, man, I'm sick, sore throat, runny nose, headache, fever." I mean, I'm just, I'm sick, doctor. The doctor asks you a question, but you're not really listening. He says, "How long have you been having these symptoms?" "Two weeks." So the doctor goes, looks at your chart, look at your patient history, comes back and says, "You have the flu." The doctor doesn't recommend therapy to treat the headache, the runny nose, the sore throat. He recommends therapy to treat the flu, because in treating the flu, the symptoms go away. So what has been happening, you've been having a lot of political theater going on by all of your mayoral candidates. And if you just really sat and thought about this, you can hire more police officers all you want, you can do death penalty, you can do all this. The only way that you can reduce or eradicate crime is to get into the mind, to the mind of the person who could potentially become a criminal and show him or her a different way before they commit the crime. So now we're talking about preventative measures, okay? And that's what is never focused on, and that's why, you know, I have a holistic vision in terms of doing this work with a comprehensive game plan. You're not gonna just do this from economic development, you're not just gonna do this by focusing on so-called education. You're not, for now, I'm sure you're not gonna do it just focusing on crime. It has to be a holistic thing that incorporates cultural arts, the environment, everything. And that is the one thing I want you guys to understand, that the way that I look at situations is, especially the one that we're in, is from a holistic and more comprehensive standpoint. And for me to hear all of the mayoral candidates basically say the same thing, because they gotta seem like I'm tough on crime, and the people buy it, and then 30 years later, they still see no results. And if I can tell you this, if we are not careful, you have a contingent, especially in African-American community, with young African-American males who are so despondent and so distraught, that the type of crimes that you... that the type of crimes that you've been seeing going on here in Chicago and other places, this is a tip of iceberg because most people believe that freedom means I can do what the hell I want to do. They don't understand that freedom means the ability to govern yourself. And in governing myself, I can't infringe upon you. And in governing yourself, you can infringe upon him or him. And if everybody did that, but you can't legislate morality and you can't legislate ethics. So we have to be very clever as to how we look at synthesizing all of these elements of human development so that we can now get a more productive citizen in the city of Shreveport.